We have Quorum.
Thank you, and we now have our invocation delivered by Pastor John Britt of First United Methodist Church. You're welcome to participate but not required.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Lord, as we gather here tonight, we give you thanks for this place. As we gave thanks yesterday for our past presidents and their contributions, we give you thanks tonight for our mayor and our city council members and the civil servants here. We give you thanks for their time and their dedication to public service and their willingness to make Rapid City a better place for all. We also lift up our greater well, Lord, and particularly Iraq for your peace and your will to be done there. We pray for your blessings upon the meeting tonight for the decisions to be made. We ask that all would lead with the best intent for our community in mind, that you would be with them in their thoughts and their consideration of the things before them tonight. We pray for respect, for honor, for openness, and the word shared tonight in the discussions and the opinions. We ask that you would help all to be open to hear others and willing to consider all sides. In the decisions tonight, Lord, I ask that you would allow them to be the best for our community, for those individuals, for those neighborhoods, for the city as a whole. The understanding would be present tonight. We ask for your peace to just reign over this meeting and for your blessing to be upon it. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Britt. We're now on to the adoption of tonight's agenda. We do have one item that I would like to add. I was speaking with Mr. Allen Anderson, who has an item to bring to us under general public comment, and he'd like to brief us on House Bill 1232, a renewable energy bill. And it is his desire that the council consider a resolution of support, and the best place for that would be, and he's available for next week's Public Works meeting where it could be discussed there. So he's going to briefly present his item under general public comment, and then we can have a motion to continue at that time after hearing his presentation to next week's Public Works meeting. So with the indulgence of the council, I'd like to add on his behalf, item 4A, under general public comment, and we'll call that Renewable Energy in House Bill 1232, presentation from Allen Anderson, S.O.N. Allen Anderson, S.O.N. Any other items to add to tonight's agenda? If not, can we have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Estes to approve with the amendment or addition. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we now have awards and recognition, so if Woody Nordstrom, our Ward One Citizen of the Month, could join me down front, along with Ward One Councilmembers Ron Wyffenbach and Charity Doyle.
I'm okay.
Are you sure?
Yep.
Contagious? Here, stand next to him.
Not contagious, are you? Oh, you're gonna read it. Woody Nordstrom was born in Hot Springs, South Dakota, and lived in Buffalo Gap as a young child. He moved to Fairburn with his parents at age four, where he was educated in a two-room schoolhouse until the eighth grade. Then the shift into urban life happened, and he was bused to South Junior High for ninth grade and ultimately graduated from Rapid City High School.
I guess y'all are gonna hear me talk tonight. After graduation, Woody joined the Navy, where he began tinkering with airplanes, first as a grease monkey and then later as a painter. After the Navy, Woody, along with a few of his cohorts, took advantage of the Rapid City Fire Department strike and went in to fill the need that that strike left open. He worked as a first responder until 1972 after doing his part responding to the flood that impacted the community. Upon leaving the fire department, Woody, using his Navy experience, began painting anything and everything in Ellsworth Air Force Base, including commercial buildings, chapels, street striping, and more. Woody now calls South Dakota School of Mines and Technology his employment home and has nothing but positive things to say about the campus and the people he works with. Woody is very proud that his son and daughter both graduated from SDS M&amp;T. Woody never considered himself to be one to jump out in front or draw attention to himself by advocating for anything. But something changed this past holiday season when law enforcement in the nation, including Rapid City, were subjected to violent acts and negative publicity. He knew law enforcement officers had some of the highest-risk jobs, dangerous jobs, and after hearing of low morale at both the Sheriff's Department and the Rapid City Police Department, he decided to do his part in bolstering morale. He wanted law enforcement to feel appreciated for the difficult work that they do. To that end, Woody took it upon himself to create a simple bumper sticker that reads, "Support your local law enforcement." The sticker has graphics of both the RCPD and Pennington County Sheriff's Department badges, and Woody has been distributing these throughout the community, asking for nothing in return. All he wants is for our law enforcement officers to see the bumper stickers and for them to be reminded that there are many people who support them. Woody has also some words of advice for the community. When asked if he has any ties to law enforcement, Woody simply said his experience with the police started and stopped with a couple rides in the back of a police car, and that when he assessed why he was in that situation, it was because he wasn't being a very nice person. "If we all take an honest look in the mirror," Woody says, "we know why we're having that interaction with the police. We are so grateful Woody is a part of our community and proud of the service he's doing to support local law enforcement. Thank you, Woody, and keep up the good work." Woody is pretty humble, and he doesn't want to say anything. So I'll say a couple of words. He totally, he's so humble, I just love this. I just love it. You know, before I came here, I saw something on Facebook, and it was an episode that happened in Cincinnati within the last few days where a young black man was shot trying to hold up, or he was holding up a store, and a person from the public who was carrying a weapon took it upon himself to protect the people in that venue from this man. What's interesting is we really haven't heard about it. It's not something that gained national momentum. It's not something that was all over the place that took the nation by storm. In fact, this gentleman that shot the perpetrator is being called a good Samaritan. And you and I both know that if that had been a police officer that shot the perpetrator holding up people at gunpoint, he would have been called a murderer. And in a day and age where it is hard to recruit people to do the job that nobody else wants to do, and they're rewarded with being dehumanized, I, for one, being a law enforcement wife, very much appreciate Woody and the people like him who try to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
And Woody Nordstrom wants everybody to know that he is not related to Ward Two Councilmember, Richie Nordstrom. Now we have Veteran of the Month. Is Ronald Twining here tonight? Ronald? Our Veteran of the Month here tonight, Ronald? No? We'll move that into next month. Pastor Jared Strong, would you come up, please? And Rhoda? Could you come up, please? Rhoda? And Darla?
Starting a few years ago, these wonderful ladies and Bethel Assembly Church decided to perform a wonderful service for the city council, and once a month, they come in and provide councilmembers and department heads and staff who have to work during the council meetings, provide them with a wonderful meal. And we want to thank you for your service in such a quiet and important way for our community, and it means a lot to us. Thank you very much. And if Chad Lewis falls asleep tonight, it's because he's well-fed, so.
Jerry and Brad, would you come up, please, as council leadership?
Yeah, exactly. At least he doesn't have a phone dial.
But what's that supposed to mean?
I'm sitting by these great chefs right here.
Thank you, everyone. We do have an executive session tonight, and it's for the purpose of discussing item number four, which is direction to staff regarding violations at 6:30 St. Joseph Street, also known as the historic Buell Building. And do we have a motion to go into executive session? Motion by Lewis, a second by Drew. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are in executive session. We have a motion to come out of executive session. We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Laurenti. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll go to our city attorney for explanation and recommendation for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discuss an executive session, the owner of the Buell Building, the building is in disrepair, the external facings of the building, and we would ask for authorization. We had sent the owner a letter asking him to voluntarily comply. He has failed to meet the deadline, and so we would ask for authority to file an action necessary to bring the, in court, to bring the building into compliance with C code.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion on item number four? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do have an item 4A that we added at the beginning from Allen Anderson regarding renewable energy in HB 1232. Before we go to him, though, we'll go to the one general, since that's been actually added to the agenda, we'll go to the general public comment item that we have that just came in. We'll go to Bill Free Tag under general public comment. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Bill Free Tag, 3821 Brook Street. Before you set your clock, I'm probably going to overrun by just a few seconds, so cut me a little slack. I want to address what I call the ADA myth in the Civic Center. My first point is, the public is under the impression that ADA has been neglected for years by city government. This is simply not true. By the end of 2010, three and a half million dollars had been spent in the Civic Center at the theater to address ADA problems. Not only ADA improvements at the Civic Center, but money was spent in this very chamber. Handicap issues were addressed right here. In 2010, a promise was made to continue to address ADA problems as money came available. When I look at the current five-year plan for vision money, I currently see $2.3 million in contingency. Has any of the contingency money been used for ADA since 2010, or did the efforts end? I know no one will answer me now, but I hope one of you would bring this up later tonight and get the answer. My second point is, the public has been misled concerning a bogus ADA complaint and a bogus lawsuit brought against the city over ADA noncompliance. As early as April 2014, Jeff Bailey from the Civic Center Board received an answer to his request from the DOJ concerning who complained. DOJ clearly said there was no complaint filed. At first, I was upset with Jeff Bailey for not setting the record straight until I learned he did try. He brought this attention to the mayor and the council long ago. In the interest of fairness, I need to say the confusion began with when DOJ said August 2012 that a complaint was sent to the DOJ. However, in the letter to Jeff Bailey, this error was set straight. DOJ clearly corrected the record, saying there is no signed complaint document. Yet I find no effort to correct this misinformation from any of the Civic Center proponents or from a single elected official other than Ron Wyffenbach. Even more disturbing, I find a very recent, just two to three weeks ago, a new Center One half-hour presentation concerning the Civic Center called "The Power of the Penny." You can view this anytime by going to the new Center One website. Pay close attention, 11 minutes into the presentation. The presenter says, and I quote, "I am holding in my hand, right here, a lawsuit against the city of Rapid City regarding ADA deficiency." But there is no lawsuit and not even a complaint. Yet again, this myth was fed to the public freely and openly. The mayor himself can be seen in the Power of the Penny presentation, sitting next to the presenter, and making absolutely zero efforts to correct what was just said. Only from the recent efforts of the past five mayors was this brought to the public's attention, and these mayors were amazed to learn this because the bogus ADA complaint was at the center of the $180 million expansion. Because the city has about 100 buildings, this begs the question, why was the Civic Center singled out, and who brought the DOJ to the Civic Center for what is now called a courtesy inspection? And why would DOJ even be interested? Because $3.5 million in ADA upgrades were just completed in 2010. Remember, it was 2011, according to the mayor's office, when the first DOJ visit took place. I think I know who caused this visit to happen, and I will have my documentation by the end of this week. However, I sincerely encourage you to ask these questions amongst yourselves tonight. Ask who invited the DOJ to the Civic Center in the first place, and ask how much money has been spent on ADA since 2010, and then present the answers to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jerry Wright has requested to add this to the agenda. This will take a unanimous vote of the councilmembers present, and we would add this under council items. We'd make it 41A. Jerry, we'll go to you to make a motion.
Make, to dispel the rumors and...
Let's make a motion.
Make a motion that is to agenda discussion of ADA issues.
We have a motion by Wright to add item 41A regarding ADA at the Civic Center. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Estes. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that's been added to item 41A. Thank you. All right, so we will now go to item 4A. This is on renewable energy, House Bill 1232, and we'll go to Allen Anderson. Good evening, sir. You have the floor.
Good evening, Allen Anderson, 7774 Columbine Court. Thank you for your time this evening. And this is a complicated issue. Could easily take an hour to try and go through all the different pieces, but I'll try and do it in just, try and do it in just, in three minutes. I'm a retired engineer and public land manager as of a month ago, and over the years, I've developed a strong interest in renewable energies. Recently joined an outfit called Dakota Rural Action, and they have a lot of different issues that they're working on, but one of them is renewable energy. They have recently brought a bill to the House Energy Committee, Commerce and Energy Committee, to address a rate issue. The bill is called "Establishing a Methodology to Determine the Value of Small-Scale Electricity." I have, hopefully, a copy for each of you that talks about, some information about, explains the bill, and there's a copy of the actual bill at the end of that handout. The key points for the bill are, more South Dakotans are choosing to invest in their own electricity generating, but they are finding there is no guideline to determine how much their excess electricity is worth. So far, the investor-owned utilities have determined the rate at which they purchase electricity from individual generators. The utilities have taken a very narrow view of what electricity is worth, and the current system of valuation does not follow best practices accepted around the country. Some small-scale electricity generation is a valuable part of South Dakota's energy mix, and our policies need to reflect the growing desire for and value of these systems. An open, transparent process for determining the value of small-scale electricity generation that takes into account all factors, not just fuel costs, as well as the value of the grid, is the best way to establish how individual energy producers should be paid for what they are providing as a service to their fellow citizens. The key part for the bill on the next page is, "The methodology shall determine, at a minimum, account for the value of energy and its delivery, generation capacity, transmission capacity, transmission and distribution line loss, and environmental value. The Public Utilities Commission may, based on known and measurable evidence of cost or benefit of small power production facilities to the utility, incorporate other values into the methodology, including credit for locally manufactured or assembled energy systems, systems installed at high-value locations on the distribution grid or other factors." And this would be determined by the Public Utilities Commission, who regulates the utilities, and it would be done every five years, and it would be done in an open, transparent process, so people could comment on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I think it, just one more second?
Yes.
That's okay, Mayor. I think there's value to the city if you have renewable energy program, or a renewable energy program, or desire to do so in the future. It would be valuable in that it would help you establish the payback for those systems in the long term, and I think in the long term, it would reduce the energy costs for the city, and it would also help provide solar and wind energy jobs for the local community. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would Alderman Jerry Wright?
Thank you. I support the consideration of this item by the council at the next Public Works, and the number one reason is the current landfill has a flare-burning gas, has been for about four and a half, five years, and ultimately, that should be used to generate power. And once we get power generation, if that's an option, or that gas is used for an alternative form of energy, we need a better way of formulating how we're going to recover our costs and benefits. So it's a good issue for the city to consider and debate. Thank you.
Take to Public Works Committee for further discussion. Motion by Wright, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Alderman Charity Doyle.
I think I remembered Mr. Anderson saying last week that they would have needed something by February 21st.
The timeline is tight, right? They're going to vote, the committee's going to vote on this bill on Friday. And I understand trying to move something that fast, that it's complex, would take some time, so if it gets voted out onto the floor so the House can vote on it, then there will be more time to bring this information forward. But if anybody wants to comment on it before, then that'd be great, but if you can't...
Well, do you remember the discussion we had last week was, we were hoping to have some kind of a draft or something linked to the agenda so that councilmembers could study it prior to tonight?
Right.
I can't speak for everybody, I'm only one of 10 up here, but I know that to rush something like this through, just for the sake of doing that without really having researched it, is something I'm not comfortable doing. So with the vote on the legislature floor coming up that soon, I would be, I guess, not willing to rush that through this week.
I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Darla Drew.
I would have to echo the comments of Charity Doyle. This is a very complex issue, and, you know, I'm the newest person here on the council, and I'm not really familiar with what all is entailed in this bill for the legislature. I mean, I read it, but it seems a very complex issue, and as we're talking about the future of smaller generated electrical sources, I think we really have to be careful when we move forward on this, so I'm going to have to vote no also.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I understand where my colleagues are coming from to try. We're just looking for a...
This is just a motion to take to the Public Works meeting for an update, so you're not directing staff to do anything, you're simply taking it to committee for further discussion because this was walked on tonight's agenda.
That way, we could, we could...
Well, it could be a moot point, but we've seen legislation die and pier and then come back the following year and live, so I don't see a harm in it going to the Public Works meeting. I would just like to avoid a prolonged discussion on it now.
Didn't we start the conversation at some point?
Yeah.
Because basically, we're just, it looks like it's just supporting, you know, people who maybe have solar panels or wind generators in their house. I know, I think, is that Mr., can I direct a question, Mr. Anderson?
And Pauline and I both sit on the municipal board, so we can have an update on Tuesday as well. It's my, based on what I have heard, is that the municipal league doesn't, hasn't gotten involved in this issue in the past, although the municipal electrics, like Brookings, have fought it, and the bill has come up in the past and has gone down. But we typically haven't gotten involved, but that doesn't mean that we can't, so.
Okay, thank you. I think you answered my question.
Okay. Anything further on this? The motion is to take to next week's Public Works meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with... Motion carries with two noes from Estes and Drew. Make it through. A roll call, please.
Wyffenbach. Laurenti.
Yes.
Scott. Sorry, she's not here. Drew.
No.
Lewis. Doyle.
No.
Wright.
Yes.
Estes.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Five to four.
So let's, it's continued to next week. Okay? All right, thank you. Have I missed anyone on public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. Okay. We're now on consent items five through 37, five through 37. Anybody would like to remove any items for separate consideration? I'd like to remove the South Valley Drive item 25. Ron Wyffenbach, would you? Ron?
Mr. Mayor, item number 34.
Jerry Wright?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the balance five through 37, with the exception of 21, 25, and 34? Motion by Estes, second by Lewis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 21. We'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 21 is to continue, continue to the March 10th, 2015, Public Works Committee meeting the policy regarding replacement and reimbursement of damaged sprinkler systems within the city, public right-of-way. I move to approve.
We have motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom, and we'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you. Just for clarification, Terry, it specifically says here the policy towards damaged sprinkler systems. Are we also looking at other items on that policy that we may want to change, or are we strictly going to stay only the sprinkler systems?
I, I think we've been focused on the sprinkler systems, but we'll probably take a look at everything. I mean, from mailboxes to trees to everything.
Good, I hope so. And so, all right, thank you. I think we need to do the, the entire review as best we can. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 25, we'll go to our Public Works Vice Chair, Richie Nordstrom. You're going to read 25 for us, and then, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 25 is to update the South Valley Drive area maintenance, and I'll yield the floor to Mr. Walter Storff.
Good evening, Terry.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Since I wasn't able to give this presentation last week at Public Works, I, I thought I'd request to have it pulled off, and I could give you just a, a brief update to the council on, on snow removal and street maintenance, maintenance activities out on South Valley Drive. We occasionally, not, not all, not very often, but occasionally do get phone calls into our office. I know the mayor's office also gets some from residents out in the South Valley Drive area, with questions on which roads are maintained by the city and/or the county, and, and which roads are not maintained. Attached to the agenda tonight is the area of the South Valley Drive area, and bear with South Valley Drive from East St. Pax, East St. Patrick Street, south to Fairmont Boulevard, East Fairmont, which is about right here in this location. It's indicated in green on this drawing, that is maintained by the county, it's not in city limits. They do snow removal in that section. South Valley Drive from that point south is maintained all the way out to Catron Boulevard by the city as far as snow removal. Keep in mind, there's no road maintenance that's, as far as pothole repair, that type of activity that's done. That is out in the county as well. There's quite a few of the side streets off of South Valley Drive that are in city limits. We maintain the streets that were dedicated as public right-of-way, and they're highlighted on this, on this map in purple. We do the snow removal, we do the road maintenance, pothole repair, grading of the gravel roads. The roads out there that are not highlighted are not maintained by the city or the county. Those are private roadways. The main reason for that is the, the public right-of-way was never dedicated to the public as public right-of-way, so they are privately maintained roads within the city limits. We have quite a few of those in the city, Springbrook area, there's quite a few up in Chapel, Chapel Valley area, so it's not unlike that area. But it is kind of a, a hodgepodge of, of who's who out there as far as street maintenance. And we do have this snow map linked out on our website, if, if people are interested, out on our snow removal website, and I certainly would stand for any questions that you may have.
Terry, most of these streets are gravel roads, and, aside from the private roads, most of these are all gravel roads out there? Is that correct?
Actually, quite a few of them are asphalt. There are some gravel roads, but there are several asphalt roads out there as well.
You're not asking for any policy changes or anything like that tonight?
No, this was really more educational purposes for the council and the public as to what, where, and why we do certain maintenance activities out there, and why we may not. For instance, if you look at the section out here, I would need to zoom this in a little bit, but Garden Lane, this is a perfect example of what's kind of odd out here. Garden Lane is right here in this location. Garden Lane that extends west of South Valley Drive is maintained by the city. Garden Lane that extends east of South Valley Drive is privately maintained, not maintained by the county or by the city. Again, that goes back to the way that properties and the right-of-ways were originally platted and dedicated or not dedicated to the public.
One more question, Mr. Chair. The streets that you've got marked in purple on this map that we're looking at, is it safe to assume that those are maintained by the city then?
Everything in purple is maintained by the city.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor. I don't see any need for making any policy changes, so I'll yield the floor.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, we have a motion to acknowledge, Wright. We did not have a motion? Richie, you did make a motion?
We made a motion to acknowledge.
Motion by Estes, second by Lewis, to acknowledge item 25. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on item 34. Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 34 is to authorize a finance officer to transfer $8,000 from the general fund to the Meadowbrook Golf Course Enterprise Fund to cover operating shortfall in fiscal year 2014. I move approval.
We have a, a motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Ron Wyffenbach.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I pulled it off the agenda because I, I, I looked at it, and I had some question about how we are operating this. I understand that this is an ongoing, and I believe, from what my understanding is, that we've dedicated $50,000 in the future budgets of the general fund to be sent to the golf course. It's going, and I could maybe could ask Mr. Beegler if that's correct. I thought, at this point, this needs to become some kind of a budget item, so we could be transparent to the, to the public that they understand that we're using general funds year after year to subsidize the golf course fees out there.
We recognize our Parks and Recreation Director, Jeff Beegler, and congratulations on your national recognition.
Thank you very much. Yes, to answer your question, this is not something new, that the, the golf course is operating with a, with a deficit. Every year, there needs to be a transfer to, to cover the shortfall, and it either takes place in the form of a general fund transfer, or a transfer from the development fund that is part of the, the golf course. For every nine holes that are played, a dollar is, is paid to go into a development fund. That fund is supposed to be used for projects that improve the course, or for purchase of equipment to maintain the course. So in past years, that fund has been used quite a bit to cover the shortfall, and therefore, right now, we're faced with a lot of equipment out there that is really old, and we've just spent quite a bit of money from the capital improvement project to re-habilitate all of the bunkers at that course, to try to give the, the place a new, a new feel and a, and a new excitement to play. And so we really would like to have that development fund go to, to go toward purchase of some equipment that'll better maintain that course.
Mr. Mayor, the next question I have is, there's a, there's a capital fund there that has some money sitting in it right now?
There's not a capital fund in the, in the golf course operating.
Fund.
Yeah, well, there's, there was money in the, the Parks and Rec CIP for that bunker project, but it was specifically for that project, and it's been expended.
So then the, the last year's transfer of the $115,000 in 2013 came from the Parks and Recs CIP fund, or was that the general CIP fund?
Parks and Rec has an item within the CIP fund that was used to do the bunker project.
Okay. So I guess the bottom line question I would become, it would, is it time to really look at the fees that we're charging out there? I mean, this, this reminds me of Alderman Wright's situation with the cemetery, where we didn't have any money there, and we told him, no, we're not going to take it out of the general fund. And looking at, you know, long-term, this thing should really, you know, probably support itself. I mean, if it was a swimming pool or something like that, that didn't compete against the private sector, it would, you know, it'd be more easier or palatable for the, you know, the public to say, yeah, we'll pitch in that $80,000, $100,000 every year to, to get this going. But as it's a fee-based service, I think that maybe it's time to, we look at those fees. Is that something that's...
We, we look at the fees usually in December every year. We did increase the fees this past December for the 2015 season, and we'll certainly look at those again coming up for the 2016 season.
Thank you. I, I think you answered all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just for the public's information, if you have occasion, have that agenda in front of you, links, the links on it, the course was shut down for approximately three months this year, so that would kind of make it for the shortfall, $50,000 roughly. Plus, we didn't charge rent to the new restaurant in lieu of the fact they put about $120,000, I believe, in improvements into their restaurant.
Yes.
So we didn't, that's revenue we lost there, but that pretty much covers the $80,000 shortfalls, is that correct, sir?
That's correct.
Plus, it also should be noted that the Parks and Rec, well, the Enterprise Fund of the golf course does pay an additional $50,000 to cover the cost of water at the La Croix Links, is that correct? Is it 50 or 30?
It's 30, and I believe this year we, during budget...
We, this should be covered, but last year we didn't, right?
Correct.
Right, so that would also be an additional burden that's coming out of there. So just so the public knows, we're not, you know, necessarily robbing Peter to pay Paul all the time, it's just there's been a few road bumps there, and obligations the city does have that rightly or wrongly, the, the golf course has been burdened with, golf, so, the golf enterprise fund has been burdened with. And I think they've done a great job. They've got a new renter in there that's doing awesome, I think, with, with Marco's Pizza, and I think they've done a really good job of running the course. And I think some of the new improvements, the bunker, bunkers has been long overdue, and I think that's going to increase play, from what I understand, talking to the, the people that run that department. So I appreciate your efforts, so thank you very much.
Darla Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I can't help but bring this up, and I don't know how you would implement this, but do you think there's any reason to think about fees for the cross-country skiers or people that are using the area in the winter?
I think that we could certainly look at just about anything that's proposed out there, in terms of, of allowing it on the course and, and charging or not charging. But those are all things that we will be looking at this summer before this next winter season comes up.
Is it reasonable to enforce? I, I mean...
I don't know. I mean, it, it's probably something that could be enforced. I mean, there is staff that works out there year-round. Whether or not they'd be able to spot everybody out there during the winter, I don't know.
Yeah. I, I think it might be difficult, but it could be an income source. This, I've had people bring it up with me, so thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Estes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, when you're, the methodology in, in arriving at your new rates for the new season, you know, the private courses would have the, the stormwater drainage utility fees to pay. Was there a mock fee put on this that, so that, so that the, so that you were raising your fees as, as if you were a private enterprise? Were those fees taken into consideration?
We did, we did look at that, but what we looked at mostly was all of the courses that are kind of around this region, and what they were charging, and, and the fact that a municipal course is generally, generally charges less than a, than a private golf course or a country club. So we didn't want to price ourselves to the point where we would lose golfers and thereby losing additional revenue. So we do take into account all of the, the costs that go into maintaining the course, as well as the new stormwater fee. And we'll look at that again as we're going into the next, the next go-around of fee increases.
Thanks. I, I, a few golfers that I've talked to, they, they, they like to bring up the, the fact that they pay a dollar, I believe it's a dollar per every nine holes or...
Correct.
...towards a development fee, and they don't, they, they feel that that, I think it's their interpretation that that fee goes exclusively, exclusively to improving the area of play.
Right.
Do you, you mentioned it, but I, I don't think I really heard what the answer was. Do you, do you see in the future that dollar going back to improvements on the field and not, not, not budget shortfalls?
Absolutely, yes. That's, that's the intended purpose of it, and that's what we would like to see happen in the future. That development fee goes strictly for development projects or for equipment that's necessary to maintain the development.
Is a dollar realistic to raise enough money to, to, to do much? I mean, I, I have...
Well, it, it accumulates over time, and, and in one year, you probably wouldn't get enough, but again, if we're looking at purchasing a, a number of pieces of, of equipment, that can be done on a loan, and the loan payment could come out of that development fee, and you could actually stretch your dollars quite a bit.
Thanks, I'll yield, Mayor, thanks.
Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had one, one clarification question I'd like to ask Mr. Beegler, if I can, that I heard him say, I just want to clarify that. Mr. Beegler, on the, you're saying, how often is, let me just first ask the question, how often is the review of the costs of the golf course, and then trying to figure out what those fees should be for membership? How often is that done?
That's an annual review.
Okay. So was that done with the drainage fee this, for this year?
You know, we, I don't think we were completely, I don't think we knew exactly how much that was going to be when we were doing our, our, our work to, to review these fees. We've got a much better idea of it now, and so going forward, that will certainly be a, a, an item that we'll calculate into that formula.
Okay. And I wanted to ask that, because what I have heard from some golf courses and people who manage them here in Rapid City is that they feel, whether it's true or not, that they're competing with the taxpayers' money, and you've mentioned that you've looked at, you've tried to compare costs, but I think the misleading thing is that most golf courses have to compete with Meadowbrook, because it's one of the premier courses in the area. And so there's a sense, whether it's the truth or not, is that they're having to look at what Meadowbrook is charging, rather than vice versa, and that their costs are higher in the sense that they don't have the taxpayers' money, and much like they don't have the ability to do a supplemental whenever they want one. And so that's the part where they see this, and I think it's important for us on this council to make sure that we keep our eye on this, because the costs at the golf course have been an issue for, I think, pretty much since I've been on the council, whether it be the restaurant, or, or, you know, maintenance shed, I think was an issue at one time, the new maintenance shed. But for a private course to be able to spend that kind of money, it, it's very difficult because they're competing with a very, how should I put it, well-supported public course with limitless pockets, if you will, I won't say that, but a lot more outlets for raising funds whenever they need to, to cover their costs that a private course can't. So I just want to caution the council that we need to make sure that we have a lot more private courses, I think, than we do public courses, and we need to make sure that those private courses are healthy, and that we're aware of the fact that the public courses are competing at an advantage that a, a private course cannot. are competing at an advantage that a private course cannot. So I just wanted to word that and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oliver and Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Laurenti. That's the point I was trying to get to. I looked at the numbers and the fees and all the fees were basically, basically within twenty thousand dollars from 2013 to 2014 versus the fees that you collected. I think there was a dip in the twenty thousand dollars for season passes. Other than that, the green fees were the same. Junior golf was down a little bit. The rental was six thousand dollars difference because there was, they were being, the chop house was being charged a thousand dollars a month. They, they only paid for six months and then basically went out. So there was a, there was only a six thousand dollar difference. That's why I brought up the question, is it time to look at the fees? Because typically we want to, like Alderman Laurenti had said, we're competing with private golf courses out there that are paying. You know, they have to, they have to set their prices accordingly to be able to compete with what, you know, what the city can do. And if the city's dumping general fund money, CIP money, you know, all those types of things into it, that really puts them on an uneven playing field. So overall, there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar swing in the numbers from thirteen to fourteen. If you take out the hundred and fifteen thousand dollar CIP injection for the bunkers, there's a swing of probably about seventy-five thousand dollars from one year to the next, not related to the fees that were charged or the rent that was collected, at least from what I could tell on, on the income statements that I had in front of me today and I didn't bring them tonight, but I went through every one of them and looked at them and, because I, I wanted to make sure that, that I was, what I was looking for. And I went after I called you on the phone and went over everything with you. So that's why I brought up to the attention that, hey, we probably need to look at these fees. No, no different than what we need to look at the fees at the cemetery if we want to replace headstones. But the point is, is we have to continually do that. I mean, we can't, you know, if we continually dip into the general fund to subsidize that golf course and it puts all the competing golf courses on, on, on level playing fields. So that's why I brought it to the attention tonight. So, and I appreciate your candor with the conversation earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. We are now on a public comment for items thirty-eight through forty-one. Thirty-eight through forty-one, public comment is open and closed. Did I shut anybody out? No? Okay. Public comment is closed. We are now on item number thirty-eight. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty-eight is, thirty-eight or thirty-six? Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't know. I'm thirty-eight. Apologize. Item thirty-eight is the second reading of ordinance sixty, thirty-five, ordinance to revise the Rural Service District taxing district by amending chapter three point zero eight of the Rapid City Municipal Code and move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Thirty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty-nine is the second reading of ordinance sixty twenty-nine and ordinance to codify the relationship between the Rapid City Municipal, Rapid City Regional Airport Board and the Rapid City Department of Fire and Emergency Services by adding section two point seven-two, point one-one-five of the Rapid City Municipal Code and move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Wright and a second by, oh, motion by Lewis and a second by Wright. Any discussion? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries. Item forty. Chad.
Item number forty is the first reading of ordinance sixty thirty-three and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code resoning within described property as requested by Renter and Associates LLC for D H, D T H LLC for rezoning from medium density residential district to general commercial district. The property generally described as being located at five, one, nine Catherine Avenue. Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Drew. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number forty-one is the first reading of ordinance sixty thirty-four and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen, seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code rezoning within described property as requested by Rapid City, Rapid City for rezoning from general agricultural district to low density residential one for property generally described as being located lying east of the current terminus, southern terminus of Nugget Gulch. I move approval.
We have a motion by Lewis for approval and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion on forty-one? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries enthusiastically. Item forty-one A, this is regarding the ADA complaint. And just for those watching, this is generated from a general public comment item at the beginning of the meeting and so this has been added for further discussion and consideration. I would like to have a chance to address this item. We can first go to, would you like to go first? Or would you like me to go?
Either you or I was going to ask the city attorney to clarify the issue of the Department of Justice issues related to the ADA issues at the Civic Center, if you wouldn't mind, sir.
Would you like me to try, Joel?
Or do you want the mayor to do that?
You know, the mayor can, I guess, try. If you have some specific questions, I, I think I'd feel more comfortable with a specific question rather than, I guess I don't know exactly what you're looking for, so.
All right. I will go ahead and, if I can try.
Well, I.
And I have a few comments to make regarding this.
Go ahead.
Okay. There's an old saying that wounds from an enemy hurt, but wounds from a, a friend cut deep. And, and that's how I feel tonight. My, my integrity is very important to me. I value my integrity and I, and I, I think it's very important that we spend a few moments explaining this, this situation. In September, Alderman Weifenbach had asked me a question or had, had asked the city attorney and I questions regarding the origins of the ADA complaint. And so what I did is, is I put together the research. I sent the information to the city council. It was included in, on September twenty-three in the, the weekly mayor's update that goes out to hundreds of people. It was included in that. I also, it was around that time that I met with the journal editorial board. I think maybe it was before that. I met with Bart Fankuk and, and Shannon Brinker and Randy Rasmussen and the rest of the board over at the journal. And I also explained to them, I believe this was before Alderman Weifenbach's inquiry, that, that the, it wasn't a complaint complaint, it was a complaint file based on the Department of Justice's visit to Rapid City when they did a review of city and county buildings. Here is the message that I sent on Monday, September twenty-two, two thousand and fourteen at five oh four P M. And I sent this to, this was sent to the entire council. This was forwarded on to the Civic Center Board. This was, this information was included the next day in the mayor's update that went to hundreds of employees. And I had also mentioned on KOTA, I believe I mentioned, Joel and I talked about it the other day. We're both sure that I mentioned, that I talked about it at a council meeting. And I don't remember exactly what it, when it was, but we have been very transparent about this. And here's what it, here's what it says. "All, a few years ago, we began a quest to understand the confusing, quote, 'complaint terminology' referred to in correspondence from the Department of Justice. Until recently, we were under the impression an outside party had filed an actual complaint with Department of Justice. Civic Center Board Chairman Jeff Bailey has done additional follow-up with Department of Justice since his receipt of the attached April sixteen fourteen letter. He was recently, and this is since April, even since April of last year, they were trying to find the information. He was recently contacted by a Department of Justice official who explained the use of the term complaint was a mistake as no outside party had contacted G O, DOJ regarding access issues at the Civic Center. Although I am unsure of the sequence of events, I, Sam Quaker, did talk to Brendan Johnson's office in two thousand and eleven about the services offered by Department of Justice to help with Americans with Disabilities Act compliance and transition plan reviews and was informed, informed there was a free courtesy review available and the Department of Justice was going to be in town anyway inspecting public buildings. And they were here interviewing city and county buildings. We aren't sure if the Civic Center was already on the list of facilities to review. In conclusion, the list of corrections in the recent Department of Justice settlement agreement was triggered by Department of Justice's two thousand and eleven visit to Rapid City." Now, I was talking to Jeff Bailey just the other day and we're trying to, trying to remember if it was a two thousand and eleven visit or two thousand and twelve visit or if there were, if there were two visits. But the reality is, is I have been very transparent about this. And we now know that, that there was a, we've been told that there was a twenty, on February seven, there was a previous mayor in the paper saying that there was a twenty million dollar study, that the ADA could have been fixed for a twenty million dollar study, for twenty million dollars. And I don't, I don't, I don't remember seeing that study. And I was on the council at the time and have been a strong advocate for people with disabilities ever since the moment I was sworn in in two thousand and two. Where's the indignation about that study, Bill? And so I think, I think what we have done here is we've tried to correct an issue regarding the, regarding the KNBN story. Yes, the terminology was used on lawsuit, but there was a settlement signed. That's what Shad Olson was holding in his hand. A settlement was signed with Department of, of Justice. That's a public settlement. And, and the settlement implies if you don't fix it within a certain amount of timeframe, you are facing a lawsuit. What's being said ultimately here, you guys, is that the, is that there's some that are trying to paint the picture that there isn't a smoking gun on, on the, on disability complaint. There is a smoking gun. The smoking gun is twenty-five years of, of ignored Americans with Disabilities Act issues in the Barnett Arena. The fixes that were referred to in, in public, in public comment were, were fixes that were referred to over at the theater. And I would say, you know, I know that you're going to want a chance to speak, but really if we're going to go back and forth on this, we should add this to an agenda rather than have an ambush item like this was tonight. I was ambushed on this. Now, thankfully, I have, I have a lot of information on this in my head and my heart because this is an issue that I have a lot of passion about. But we have been very transparent and, and honest about this. And John McLaughlin, with all due respect to the Rapid City Journal, I sat in the journal, in the journal editorial board last September and I explained to them that it wasn't a complaint complaint filed by an individual. It was a complaint file based on Justice Department's review. You know, I, I don't wear a lot of issues on my sleeve. But one issue that I do wear on my sleeve is my passion for serving people with disabilities. Because the disability demographic, it's the one minority group that you can join over your lunch hour. It's the one minority group that you can join on your way home tonight. It's the one minority group that you can join and rejoin in multiple ways. And I've long been a passionate, passionate about serving people with disabilities and serving minorities in, in general. And for my integrity to be besmirched because I'm supposed, because I'm asking questions and asking for these issues to be addressed, you know what? I was sitting right down there because I was relegated to the end. So that way I wouldn't be influenced other council members back in two thousand and six. But I was sitting down there on the end and I voted no on the ice arena because I felt that we were adding rooms to one end of the hotel when the other end was burning. And I said, I think we're making a mistake here because we're ignoring the, the Americans with Disabilities Act issues at the Barnett. So rather than complain and complain and complain about it, once I became the mayor, I decided, you know what? We're going to do something about this because we've kicked this can down, down the road for, for a long time. So you know what, Bill? We, we exchanged emails on another issue today. You have my phone number. You have my cell phone number. You have my home number. And, and you came tonight in a deliberate effort to besmirch my integrity and to try to call me a liar in front of my community when I told, when I was out in front of absolutely everybody last year explaining what this was about. I'm on record at KOTA. I'm on record down here. I'm on record in email. I'm on record at, in front of the journal editorial board. But you know what? What difference does it make what the origins of the issue are? We have federal violations of a Civil Rights Act at the Barnett Arena and we are working to try to address it. And we're working, and I'm working so hard on it that I went out and, and collected signatures myself so that people could have access and have the final say at the ballot. So, thank you very much.
Okay, now, I'm going to answer your question.
Not right now. We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Since this was not an agenda item and, I'm going to say it the way I see it. I think it's a, become a very super political issue. I'm not going to ask you any questions, Bill, and I'm not going to ask you to speak. So you might want to sit down for just a minute and we'll see if someone else wants you to bring them back. But I'm just going to say a couple of comments. I'm going to ask the attorney one question. In our Barnett Arena, do we not have Department of Justice ADA violations that we need to address to keep it open? I assume within thirty months after their notification. Is that true or not?
I mean, yes, we have ADA issues that need to be addressed or they will take, I believe they will take action against us.
And we are not sure what those actions are, correct?
Well, I would say we can narrow it down. The most obvious are to file a lawsuit to force us to comply or to withhold federal funds.
The other comment I would like to make is that I reviewed today at our, at our meeting this morning, two estimates that were performed by forefront design retained by the city and Civic Center Board to evaluate the ADA shortages, shortfalls within the Barnett Arena. And they came in to approximately thirty-six million dollars. Martinson, when they did their evaluation, they found the same, approximately the same amount of money. So there's a significant amount of things that need to be done. On top of that, T S B did a study on life safety issues because we started addressing the ADA issues. We need to address them because we're going to need to require a modification or building permit to do this. So in reality, the seventy-plus million dollars that we need to spend is not a myth. It's a reality that we have to address. That's a fact. Is that correct? That's a fact. It's been identified by a licensed professional firm, two of them actually, and one contractor. So the address of the ADA issues are not a made up, not a, not a, anything that was recreated or a facade. The reality that we have to address as a city. And if we don't access utilization of that Barnett Arena, I would say would, if we don't either modify them and, and do it through a rebuild or replacement, we will not be able to use it without being violation of federal law and we will be subject to legal action, correct? I rest my case. This is not a manufactured issue that we created just to do a project. It's a real issue that we are facing as a community. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
Jeez. You got me so worked up. You, I bought half deaf in this ear over here, Mayor. No. I, I got a couple of questions and it, this isn't politics. I just, I just, I really wanted to know some answers for myself. You, you said you called Brendan Johnson's office and, and there was a courtesy inspection. So my question is, is, is that if we knew they were here on a courtesy inspection, did we know, I mean, did somebody, I mean, usually you wouldn't let the Department of Justice just go through your building. They would, they would contact somebody. Was somebody with them that, that audited, I mean, walked through with them? And are you aware?
Well, I believe Brian Maliski was, which was one of the reasons why he was accused of filing the complaint. I mean, everybody's been accused of filing a, filing a complaint, but the Department of Justice was here on a, on a, on a, on a review. And whether it was a result of my, of my call to Department of Justice, to the local civil rights division in Brendan Johnson's office, or whether it was a planned review, they were in, they were in city and county buildings. And I certainly didn't express any concern about county buildings. So that, that leads one to logically believe that they were here on a routine review, which they often do. I mean, you can go through, do a Google and see that they've, they've been in Butte County. They've been in, in Spearfish. They've been in, in many communities and counties in South Dakota.
Okay. Well, you know, when, on one side, we call it a courtesy review and on the other side, you say, well, one end of the hotel's on fire while we're adding on to the other. So you said, when you became mayor, you're going to take the bull by the horns or do something about it. So, so it's kind of, it's kind of, it is a little bit misleading to the people out there as to what role you may have played. Is all I'm saying is because you, you know, you said you were going to take care of it and you picked up the phone. So my question to Joel is now, we've, have we signed, the mayor signed the, the agreement with the Department of Justice and we, I'm embarrassed to even ask this, but we as a council approved that, didn't we?
Yes. The council approved the settlement agreement on November seventeenth. It was item number forty on the agenda.
So, I'm not an attorney. I, and I shouldn't be asking, I should have known the answer to this. Why, how does a courtesy review end up being a document that has the power to force us? I mean, if that's a, if this is a, if their review was a courtesy review, how does that force us to a, to a thirty, to, to come to the table to sign an agreement that's got a thirty day, thirty-month clock on it?
I mean, the Department of Justice is an enforcement agency. I mean, they're, they're tasked with the. I mean, they're tasked with the, Civil Rights Division is tasked with achieving compliance with America's civil rights laws. The ADA is a civil rights law. When they came through and they saw the extent of the violations, I mean, it took them two years, but they sent us a settlement agreement and said, basically, we want you to get this facility into compliance with the ADA or we are going to take further action. As I showed you at the time, there was other settlement agreements from other communities all over the country. And I think, if you'll recall, we discussed this. You know, the example I used, now, they looked at the entire facility. And as Mr. Freitag pointed out, there had been money spent in other areas of the facility over the years. The theater had been brought into compliance. When the ice arena was built, it was built in compliance with the ADA. They went through the whole facility and they actually identified issues with the entire facility. Again, if you'll recall, we discussed, one of the examples I used was that a seating section in the ice arena wasn't assembled at the time they walked through. So they identified a lack of accessible seating, but when that section is up, there is sufficient number of accessible seats. When we discussed it with them, it became clear it would be easier to get, because we knew there were violations in the other portions of the building that were legitimate, that it would be easier, we're going to have to get an independent licensed architect anyway, who could just certify that than try to negotiate over the little issues here or there that were compliant. The other thing I talked to the council about when you made your decision was that it's a real subjective standard. It says, as a government building, I know there's been a lot of talk about grandfathered in. You are not completely grandfathered in as a public entity on an existing building. Because as a public building, all buildings need to be readily accessible to, those are all programs, need to be readily accessible to those with disabilities. Well, what does that mean? And there isn't a clear definition of it. But what I'll tell you is if you look at the case law, those lists like we have of the, you know, 400 or how many hundreds of violations, those are all barriers to accessibility. And the more barriers to accessibility there is, the more likely that the court or the government will find that it's not readily accessible. So then the question becomes, well, how many do we have to fix to become readily accessible? Well, if you don't fix them all, you're always going to be potentially subject to somebody coming in and complaining that you're still in violation even though you've expended a significant amount of money. The other factor, usually if you argue that you shouldn't need to correct something, there's a cost factor. Well, whether people agree that we should be spending $180 million on this facility or not, we, I think, have demonstrated that we have sufficient money to make the bond payment on the $180 million facility if we want to spend the money that way. So how do we make the argument that we can't afford a $30 to $40 million fix to make it compliant? You know, when I talked to the council, the other thing I said is to try to talk about a litigation on it. If we were talking about the balance of the facility outside the Barnett Arena with the money that has been invested, I wouldn't have any problem going into court and say with the ice arena, let's say they amended the ADA and changed some of the rules. And so it technically wasn't in compliance with the current version of the ADA. But because when the ice arena was built, the ADA was in effect and it was built with accessibility in mind, I wouldn't have a problem going into court and arguing that the ice arena is readily accessible to people with disabilities. However, because the Barnett Arena was designed and built in the 1970s and no consideration was given to accessibility, my opinion at the time was that I did not relish the idea of going into court and arguing that the Barnett Arena was readily accessible. Something else, and I know a lot, none of you were on the council when the ice arena was built, I don't think, other than Mayor Quaker. Part of the reason we ended up with a separate ice arena is they looked at putting the team in the Barnett Arena and they knew once they got in there and started making significant alterations to the Barnett Arena to accommodate an ice rink, that they were going to have to address the ADA issues as well as some of the structural issues. And they looked at what it was going to cost and it was going to cost more than building the new ice arena completely from scratch. So the decision was made to build the ice arena and then you wouldn't, you still wouldn't have the sky boxes and some of the other amenities that are in the ice arena. Plus, as you've heard through the discussion on the proposal, the current proposal, one of the things the Civic Center staff wants is more event space so they can have more event days and more flexibility with events. And so it was viewed as a good thing to have the second arena with the ice arena, smaller one for half-house shows and things like that. And that was part of the decision. But while it wasn't totally the decision, part of the reason that we have a separate ice arena was because they knew what the cost of addressing the ADA was at that point and chose to go that route instead because they could get a brand-new arena from the ground up for less than what it was going to cost to bring it into compliance.
Okay, thanks. About two minutes in, you recollected in my mind some of the conversations we had when we voted on it. I just, I'm just trying to get in my mind how we, you know, I can see how you can get from a complaint to an agreement, but from a courtesy visit to an agreement. And I appreciate, I remember now some of the conversations we had leading up to the vote. I guess the last thing I want to say is that when you go on the Civic Center's webpage and you look at the Department of Justice's agreement, the agreement speaks to some attachments. Those attachments are not accessible when you look at the agreement on the Civic Center's website. They may be available, reachable to us when we go onto our agenda and click on the item. But I, yesterday when they were having the Stormwater Drainage Utility Meeting that I missed, I was scolded about, but I was having coffee with a constituent over the Civic Center and that's one of the things we tried to find on the internet and the attachments, if somebody could make sure that those attachments are on the Civic Center webpage. I appreciate, I'm not trying to pick a fight, I just, it's easily confused out there and I appreciate your explanation. Thanks.
I agree, it's easily confused and that's why there was such an effort made to explain it last year and now here we are. So we'll go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Joel, can I ask you just a couple of questions? Just to clarify things here, there has never been a lawsuit filed by DOJ against Rapid City for ADA compliance at the Civic Center, correct?
No, correct. That is correct. The settlement agreement was entered into to avoid the filing of a lawsuit.
And one more question. If the Civic Center, yes, doesn't pass, if this is defeated and we start over again and say it takes us a year to come up with plans for a new arena, we're 12 months into that, 30 months, if it takes two years for construction, do you believe that the DOJ would sue us because we didn't comply within that 30 months?
Well, I've answered that to the council. I mean, you can kind of use common sense, although I think a lot of people would argue when the federal government's involved, you can't. But if we were well on our way to bringing it into compliance, I think they would have a hard time justifying bringing suit. If we were nowhere near, let's say you, let's say we try to come up with a Plan B and then Plan B is defeated and we're about 12 months out and we haven't done anything and we don't have a plan, I would be pretty worried at that point. But if we are under construction of something and the 30 months expires, do I think that they would use resources to file suit on us at that point? No, I think that would be unlikely.
So you're telling me you believe that we would have to be under construction or they would?
That's where, it depends on where we're at. I cannot answer that. I mean, ultimately, that would be up to them. There was a reason why we put it 30 months out, all the repairs to the Barnett Arena, to give us as much time as possible to be in compliance by the expiration of the settlement agreement. The other repairs were put earlier in the process so we'll get the rest of the facility cleaned up. And then the repairs to the Barnett Arena were pushed out to the 30 months, which was the maximum they would allow us to push it out.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. I appreciate that. And Bill, you look like you're chomping at the bit over there. Is there something more you wanted to add?
Yeah, I think I should answer Sam's question to me about where's my outrage at Alan Hanks' $20 million study or a study that said there was $20 million in improvements and that Sam can't find the documents. And the truth is, there is no, there was never a study. Alan never said there was a study. You guys know Alan, call him up and ask him. What Alan said was that was in a conversation that he had with Maliski and that in that conversation with Maliski, Maliski estimated $20 million. And that's what Alan said and that's what Alan will tell you today if you talk to him. He never said there was a study. So no wonder Sam can't find it. The other thing is here that I don't know the answer, so I asked you to ask yourself these questions. Since 2010, have you made any effort to do any of the things like Joel said? Start on them? You know, maybe you have and I don't know about it. But that's a conversation that you guys ought to be having and, you know, the signs that need moved and the simple stuff that can be done. Is anybody doing it? Has anybody made any effort since 2010 to do any of it? And what about the $2.3 million bucks you got sitting there in the Vision Fund that's uncommitted? You know, why couldn't you keep doing what was being done prior to 2010 where you were just piecemealing what you could do at the time and just keep working on it and keep whittling on it away? And I'm pretty sure that's what Joel's telling you, is that if you're doing those kind of things, the likelihood of you, you know, going upside down with DOJ is pretty unlikely. But if you do absolutely nothing, then it is a problem and DOJ will probably be upset on it. So that's a question you guys need to ask yourselves tonight. Is there money available and since 2005, has anybody lifted a finger to address a single ADA question out there? And I would encourage every one of you to call Alan Hanks and ask him if he said there was a study. And I guarantee you, he's going to say there was no study.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Chad Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I think I heard him say it at the press conference and it was in the paper that he did say there was a study for $20 million or something like that, unless I misheard that.
February 7, 2015.
So I do believe he did state that. I mean, whether or not there was one, I'm just saying what I was quoting in the paper. I guess, folks, you know, I appreciate the mayor clarifying the mystery of what was going on. Doesn't matter to me. I mean, it does and it doesn't. I mean, I guess you'd want to throw darts at people, that's fine, but I'm not here to do that. I'm not about politics, I'm here to do what's right for the city. So how we got here doesn't matter to me as much as the fact we don't have a choice to do something one way or the other. As far as starting to do something about it, you know, Bill, I don't think you can just start throwing $2 million here, $2 million there to try to fix this. Because if, looking at what's wrong with the arena, I mean, those stairs are all out of compliance and none of them rise and run and work. Those are concrete stairs going up, you know, 50 feet in the air. You don't just put a patchwork on those. Those have got to be, you got to make a major, you know, cuts. And I mean, just, I don't even, that's the scope of project, I don't even have the comprehension for because I do residential construction, but I can only imagine what it's like to try to fix that. You don't just put a Band-Aid on it. It's a comprehensive plan and it's cheaper to do it, I think, in the long run, do it the right way. So, but it doesn't matter to me what the overall price tag is. I mean, it matters from a perspective of using taxpayers' dollars wisely, but the fact of the matter is your Vision Funds are going to get spent on this either way. You're spending Vision money. And if we just put a patchwork on it, and I stole that idea from Sherri Doyle, by the way, she put that idea in my head and she's right. So people, don't quote me as thinking I'm a genius because I came up with that. But the fact of the matter is your Vision money's going to get spent either fixing it or building it right. And that's what you've got to think about. And if we use that money, it's gone and we can't, it's tied up, it's not we're going to be able to get more. So if we put $80 million into to fix it and, and don't kid yourselves, folks, we can't, we have to address the code issues. That's not, you can't pull a major building permit like that and start tearing a place apart and not fix, address the other code issues that are in that. That's not even a possibility as far as my knowledge goes. But continuing on, I just, I think you've got to realize that your Vision money's getting spent either way. And if you want to waste it on just shutting this thing down and taking away the revenue source for two or three years and losing events, I guess that's a choice you have to make. But I think the wise thing to do is to think about the future and try to move forward. So that's my opinion.
We'll go to our city attorney, Joel Landine. And Joel, I would also like you to address the status of the signing of the settlement because I don't want somebody down the road to say that they were misled on that. So if you could talk about the status of, we signed the settlement November 18 and what the status is of justice signing there and then you can address your issue.
Thank you. I actually didn't have any comments. I don't know if I was in the queue, but that was a mistake. But yes, the mayor signed it after the council approved it on the 17th. We then mailed two originals to the Department of Justice in Washington DC for their signature. We had not received it back by January, so I contacted the Department of Justice attorney to see when we could expect those to be returned. And they indicated that they were hoping to use this settlement as some of their publicity for the 25th anniversary of the ADA to demonstrate how the ADA was actually improving people's lives. So they are in contact and I think the mayor put them in contact with, and I can't remember their specific.
Brad Sadoff at Black Hills Works.
So they are in contact with them and they are putting together a press release and a, I guess, a press package to kind of highlight the ADA. And they are waiting to sign the agreement until that's ready to go. They have not been able to give us a specific timeframe. I frankly, when I talked to her in early January, thought I would have it by now. I contacted her again here a week or two ago and they still have not completed that yet. It's actually out of her hands and in their PR department. So she was not exactly sure when they were going to get that completed. The benefit to us is any additional time will add on to our time to come into compliance. But again, ultimately, I would expect we'd have it in the next month or so. And, you know, an extra month or two at the end is probably not going to be a whole lot in the great scope of things, but that's kind of the status of the signed agreement at this point.
Alderman Ron Wyfembuck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is probably the most in-depth understanding I'm getting of the ADA since I've asked the questions. And particularly, one question that I asked is, and I want people to know that the people with disabilities are important to everybody up here and there's no doubt about that and the passion runs for everybody, just as any situation. There is not people getting turned away from the Civic Center. The Civic Center is committed to helping people with disabilities. They're not getting turned away because of the ADA compliance issues that were, the thing was built in the 70s, they had, they passed ADA in the 90s. I think the concern here is as we develop through this plan, and I've been a watchdog on some of these items myself. And what happens is we are trusted by the public to give the entire story, not just the parts that we want people to understand. There's been several changes that people have been more than happy to make, but when you go out there and you say they're facts and they're not facts, then that bothers people and that makes it hard for people to have a level of trust with their council people. And I think we're getting called out on the carpet today and some of us don't like it. But it's the fact of the matter is, we need to sit up here and accept that because that's what we are. We're elected officials that are going to take a little extra heat. We're not just trying to go down to the store and buy a used car. We're looking at a big expenditure. It's very creative financing that's not been talked about. For some reason, those things get diverted. We talk about parking, those numbers get changed from 1,000 to 500 to 300 to 500, I think we're at 500 now. There, you know, we make comparisons, you know, on other civic centers that have more parking or whatever, but we don't have the facts. Mr. Mayor, I want to ask Mr. Landine a question because it was stated from a council person up here that that thing would be closed and then all of a sudden, the conversation started and it changed. If we don't know that they're not going to close that, we need to do some more homework then. They are not closing the Barnett Arena due to these ADA issues. They are not closing it. My understanding.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, my question, yeah. My question is, this 30-month thing is, we have to meet these, and my understanding was, is we're going above and beyond what the DOJ is requesting. Do these things have to be completed in 30 months or do we have to take substantial efforts to try to make these things work out? That is a question that, I mean, I think when Mr. Esses talked about people getting confused, they're completely confused. Oh, they're going to shut it down and that's just not the case. The sky's not falling. We are addressing issues. So my question, I guess, Mr. Mayor is to Mr. Landine is said, do these things all have to be completed at the end of 30 months or do we have to make concerted efforts to address these issues? And as he mentioned earlier, are these subjective? I mean, they're, when I asked the question on, do we have to address each individual one of these, the answer was they're subjective, meaning we have to make the efforts. As long as we're not shutting anybody out, that's the main thing.
Joel, can you take a crack at that?
Well, I mean, the Department of Justice is going to probably, if we don't bring it into compliance, I don't think anybody should be under the illusion we can compliance, I don't think anybody should be under the illusion we can fix some doors and, and slap some new signs up and call it good.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'm not here to get chastised.
No, I'm just saying that, look, this is not, this is not something where we-
Ask a simple question.
We need to bring it, the answer is, we need to comply with the agreement and bring it into compliance.
Within thirty months or not?
Yes.
Or, or do we start on it?
No. Well, what I'm saying is, just out of reality, while we'll technically be out, and see, this is where I'm out on a limb here, because-
Because you're guessing.
Well, exactly. So the simple answer is, we need to be completely in compliance within thirty months. But, I mean, just think about when you filed lawsuits, or when we've looked at whether to file a lawsuit. If somebody is in the middle of complying, and we have, we're under construction that's gonna bring it a hundred percent into compliance, does it really make sense for the Department of Justice to expend its resources to sue us at that point? No. That would be my answer. Does that mean they won't? They could, but my guess is, they're not gonna wanna spend the resources. But it depends on largely where we are. If we've only done a few minor changes, I mean, as discussed tonight, the big issue in the Barnett Arena is gonna be the seating bowl, the elevators, the rise and run, which, because it's all concrete and the aisle lengths, it's gonna be a lot of money to fix those. So I don't think anybody should be under the illusion that if we just ignore those and, and do-
Mr. Mayor, I'm not under any illusions, I'm not delusional.
Let me answer the question.
I'm not here to get chastised.
Let me answer the question.
I'm not a little kid.
We didn't say you were. Go ahead and let him finish.
Fine with the answer I got.
Let him finish. Go ahead and finish.
I'm under no delusions or illusions.
Well, if it, if it's not, then I think we've got a problem with the Department of Justice. If that was your question, I mean, your question was whether or not, if we were, if we were, if we had made some corrections, but not all of them, would we get sued? I think if we haven't addressed the seating bowl, we're in, we're in a problem.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I rephrase my question? My question is, if we are making efforts, you keep alluding to the fact that if we don't do this hundred and eighty million dollar project, that we're out of compliance. The fact of the matter is, if we move towards fixing those ADA, is that the issue? I mean, if we're within the thirty-month timeframe, and we're not finished at the end of thirty months, you said the federal government doesn't have any common sense, so I'm gonna rule that one out, in, in regards to your opinion. So where are we at?
That is gonna be very fact-specific to what we're doing and what the timeframe is to get in, into compliance.
That's all I'm asking for. I'm not delusional, I'm on, I don't have any visions of grandeur or false illusions, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Well, I think that this is a very elucidating conversation that we're having here. Um, but nonetheless, the answer lies with the voters. We can talk about this a lot, and we have talked about it a lot, but right now, our power to direct where this goes comes down to meetings, talking to people, talking with our constituents, and reaching out. If you wanna see this go, that's kind of our, one of our responses we have to do. We have to do that as a council. So it's in the voters' hands. Um, as far as Mr. Wyffenbach's, um, comments about the ADA, people being handled well at the, uh, current Civic Center, um, there was an article in the paper not too long ago, um, just, just saying that when a person goes, uh, with disabilities, wants to go to a big event, you know, you pull up, you get out, you know, your companion parks the car, they come back and get you. Um, and when you go to the little disabled area, there's no place for your companion to sit. You know, there have to be chairs and things like that for them that are brought out. And that is not always a consideration that the Civic Center takes into account, that you have to have somebody with you if you are disabled, to the point where you can't, where you're in a wheelchair, if you're using a walker, you need, uh, your blindness, you need somebody with you. And, and we have to address the fact that these folks are, are just as, as worthy as anyone, and getting able, to, being able to sit wherever they want to. That, that, I really feel strongly that we're not gonna have less eight people with, with disabilities, we're gonna have more. You know, baby boomers, your age, and out there. You know, we're having people coming back from wars, and we're having babies that are born with disabilities and are living through it. So we have to do this, and we have to look way into the future. I talked to some people, um, at the municipalities get together in Pier. I talked, they were from Sioux Falls. And of course, I was chiding them, I was saying, hey, geez, great job, you guys, you built a new center, now we have to build a new center, you know, like that. And they started laughing, and it was a good way to open up the conversation. But I said, I have a serious question. I heard you underbuilt. I heard you built for 2012. You have not speculated, uh, the, what you've got for a building doesn't encompass any growth. And they said it's true. They went to the voters three times, and every time the, the product, project was made smaller and made smaller. And then third time, when it was small enough for the voters to say yes, they got something that was, would accommodate their needs three years ago. And Sioux Falls, we all know is growing at an incredible rate. So I think that when we're looking at this Civic Center arena, we are looking at the future. And I find that very, uh, um, I don't know, it makes me happy, for lack of a better word. We really are figuring this out. You know, when, when they built the Civic Center, and I got to go see REO Speedwagon and Kiss and Cheap Trick and all that stuff, man, that was the best thing in the world for me. Now we get nothing, because our Civic Center is not properly adjusted to have the new concerts. It just isn't. So you're never gonna see it. So if we build this for our future, you're gonna have a route date for big bands, and I'm not talking Sir Paul McCartney, I'm talking Carrie Underwood, um, um, I don't know, Rihanna, some of those people, and Katy Perry. You can go Sioux Falls, Rapid City, Billings. We route. We route. That means we can get good stuff for good prices. And, um, a fifteen thousand-seat arena is what will help us go into the future, and I feel very strongly about that, especially after speaking to the guys from Sioux Falls. They spent all that money, and they're three years behind. So let's spend some money and be forty years ahead. Thank you.
Very right. I do have one final comment.
Ron, I'm not sure that you raised the question, would the Barnett Arena be shut down? Is that correct? And did you get it answered the way you wanted it? Or did you get it clarified?
I believe I did, and I'm gonna do some more research. Like, this was an agen, was not an agenda item tonight, so I didn't really get to prepare myself real well. So, I mean, that being understood. And also, the fact is, is, uh, I appreciate Mrs. Drew's conversations, I've had those same conversations. And, but when I get, I asked them here, nobody would come up with, hey, we need to address this right away with the Civic Center. So if that is an issue with some people, let's address it, they'll take care of it. They've already got a commitment from them to do that, so, but as far as I'm concerned, I will do some more research on my own, because I believe that's the best way for me to make sure I got a handle on it. So, but I, I have a pretty good handle on it, Mr. Right.
Okay.
But you had mentioned earlier that it was gonna be closed, and then you changed your, your, your communication to say that it wouldn't be, so that's where I got confused. And I think that's where the voter are getting confused.
Well, let me clarify my understanding, that, that, if I misled, or you misunderstood me.
That's fine.
My understanding is, if the Barnett Arena were to be remodeled to meet ADA requirements under the eighty million dollar cost estimate, that the facility will no longer, that Barnett Arena would be shut down for the construction, simply because that would be the only practical way to do it. And I think that's been discussed readily, and I think that makes sense from a construction standpoint. Another question that might be out there is, you know, people have challenged me on this, is the other word, shut down, is if we don't fix it, and we don't build something new, what are our options as a city? And I said, well, maybe we would have to cease using the arena. And someone said, you'd shut it down. I said, well, that, that's an option, it's possible. And that is a possibility, right? Otherwise, if we continue to operate it in violation of the federal regulations, we could be fined, sued, penalized, or some other way, correct? Mr. Attorney, would you?
Yeah, I mean, that would be one of your options to avoid getting sued, or, or losing federal funds, would just be to cease using the facility.
So those are the two, those are the two shutdowns or closures that I've come to understand in this whole debate over the last two and a half years, so thank you.
Alderman Brad Estes.
Make a motion to acknowledge this discussion.
We have a motion to acknowledge and a second by Laurenti. You still have the floor?
It's all I want.
Okay. Richie, could I make, would you like to make a comment, and then I'll, like to make one?
If I can just ask a couple of questions, I'm, I'm only, just specifically on the ADA issues, is that, um, just a clarification, there, there's comments or suggestions made that there's some other ADA issues to be addressed in the Civic Center as a whole. And I don't know who gets to answer this question, but aren't those items being budgeted? And, uh, uh, they're already in the process, so I'm, I'm not sure if it, does that go to charity? Alderman Doyle?
We'll go to our Board Liaison Charity Doyle.
Thank you for the question, Richie. Yes, um, after speaking with Civic Center management, um, the, the smaller issues throughout the remainder of the facility are being addressed, they are budgeted and, and planned. So we'll see those improvements forthcoming.
And, and I wanna make sure that everybody understands, and since you're the liaison on this next question, is that there, those ADA issues that you just spoke of, they're not tied to this hundred and eighty million dollars that we're addressing right now.
Correct. This would be coming directly out of the Civic Center's budget, because they're, they're manageable expenses, uh, unlike the renovations or, um, the, the needs in the Barnett Arena.
And then during your stakeholder meetings, did, did it also not come in, up in those conversations, in, in the discussion of the other options, that the Barnett Arena, just to do the ADA fixes within the, the A, uh, the arena itself, the Barnett Arena, didn't the construction people also say something to the effect that we would have to shut down the arena for two years?
Out of, directly out of the TSP report, they said it would need to close down for a couple of years as the most cost-effective method, or the cost-effective means to make those renovations. When you're considering jackhammering out all of that concrete, you can't just do it in, in phases and still have things going on there that are gonna require seating. I mean, it's, uh, one of the problems that we're having is that that Barnett Arena was built so well, although obviously, um, not to ADA compliance, because it didn't exist then, that's what's causing us a lot of the problems. It was built so well that it's not easy to just go in and rearrange the furniture. We're talking about a solid concrete and steel building, and, and it's not something you can just go, you know, tweak here and there. It's hammered out, built back up.
Agreed. Um, because I did take a look at all those issues, especially, uh, the, the steps, risers, and the hand railings, and everything to do with that. And I do also agree with, uh, Alderman Drew, that there is, uh, the population of the ADA census is still growing, and we're gonna be seeing more of that. So, thank you for addressing all those questions. Thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you. Joel Landine. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit, because I have just recently spoke to constituents on this issue, and they're asking questions, and I, I highly respect that, and I'm hoping that that's exactly what all of the voters do before they go in and march and, and weigh in. And I respect that, but I wanted to talk about the ADA compliance, because it is germane to the, the item here, but in the sense of the conversations I've had with some of my constituents, is that the cost also includes not only just the ADA stuff, but once we start tearing that building apart, there are certain upgrades, such as, you know, I talked a little bit about communications wire, well, it's changed considerably since nineteen seventies. You're probably talking CAT one, maybe CAT two in some parts of it, category one, wiring in there at CAT five or six now, which is, you know, to handle the different types of electronic communication, um, there were probably barely, I don't know, there may have been some computers in the nineteen seventies, not that I was using, unless a handheld calculator was considered a computer back then, it probably was. Uh, but that's also part of the cost. And to me, you know, one of the things that I tell my constituents is, you know, if you have a third of the cost of a major item that you own in repairs, you need to think about whether you want to invest a third of that cost, say you got a thirty thousand dollar vehicle, and ten thousand dollars is repair, you have to decide whether it's best to sink that ten grand into that vehicle, if you will, this may not be a good analogy, um, or do you go out and finance a new vehicle, not knowing whether that ten grand is gonna take care of all the problems you have? And the fact of the matter is, you still have that same vehicle. So, you know, one-third of the cost is actually borne, you know, sixty million, I'm using sixty, maybe higher, maybe a little bit lower, by the time we're done upgrading and doing all the ADA. I support doing it in this, this fashion, fixing the ADA issues by expanding it with a new Civic Center, because otherwise, we've got at least a third of the cost, we're gonna sink into an old building, and we still have the old building. Plus the fact that we have unbelievable finance terms that probably aren't gonna be available for a long time. Interest rates are not going to get better. Could, being in finance for the last seventeen, eighteen years, interest rates are not going to get better, because the, the Fed rate is at zero. I mean, you know, I, I don't know if they can go negative, if they can start using our taxpayer money to make a negative rate, I don't know if they can do that, but the Fed probably can. So that's why I support it. Uh, as a fiscal conservative, I support it, because there is no better time to finance this type of thing. And ultimately, when you're weighing the cost of fixing some of these things with ADA and the upgrades that are gonna be necessary to even host some of the things that we wanna try to get back that we can't get right now, we're still stuck with the old building. And we haven't planned for the future. And that's extremely important to me, and I'm sure it was important to elected officials in the nineteen seventies, because they had, they had the fortitude, and of course, I think it went to a public vote, and the voters made the right decision for the future. Um, and I'm hoping that the voters will ultimately get all of the answers they need, and that they'll go in and make a well-informed decision. But I do support, um, doing the Civic Center this way, but I do also understand that some of my constituents brought up some of the things that they have, and some of those things I think we need to understand as a council. And some of those things are, we have the money to build a hundred and eighty million dollar facility, or even upgrade it for sixty or seventy million, whatever that figure is going to be, if, if it gets turned down by the voters. But we have sewer systems and streets that need repair, and they've needed repairs for years. That's some of what I heard over the weekend, is that government can find a way to do some of the things that they wanna do, which are a large cost, like in a hundred and eighty million dollar Civic Center, but for some reason, we can't fix our streets. For some reason, we have still sewer systems that are clay from the nineteen forties or fifties, or even older than that, I should say. Um, and ultimately, what they're saying is that, what was also communicated to me was that we'll ultimately just raise taxes to do those things, because, well, we've decided we wanna spend a hundred and eighty million dollars on the Civic Center, but we don't wanna spend it on streets, we don't wanna spend it on infrastructure. Um, and that's legitimate to me. And now granted, this is a, a different fund, but the fact of the matter is, we have the power. We have the power of the purse here. We could, we could agree as a council to rewrite that whole Vision deal and sink all of that money into infrastructure if we wanted to. We have the power to do that. So, and that's part of the legitimate stuff that I heard over the weekend, and I just wanted to voice that, so that, I'm sure some of you have talked to your constituents and heard some of the same thing, but some even brought up schools. Granted, it's funded by the state, but they think collectively of their tax dollars. They don't think, what am I paying municipal-wise? They think of just tax dollars total, and that's legitimate. They wanna know why teachers, you know, struggle to get paid what they do in South Dakota, along with every other profession in South Dakota, for that matter, when in fact, we're wanting to spend a hundred and eighty million dollars on a Civic Center. Whether we could transfer these funds to our local school district or not, I don't know if there's a law that, or laws that would allow it. But I think elected officials, if they really had the will to do it, we could probably do it. So in summation, it's really, I just wanted to say that. I wanted to voice what they've said. I do support fixing the ADA issues and all of the upgrades that are needed for that Civic Center because I have gone to that Civic Center for many things since the 1980s. And we don't get the shows, I mean, the conventions, there's a whole bunch of things. And the fact of the matter is, all of those things bring other revenues that the Civic Center doesn't get to account for. There's a lot of private businesses that love the fact that we have LNI, that we have the Stock Show. Those people have to live or they have to sleep somewhere in Rapid City, they have to eat somewhere in Rapid City, and they shop somewhere in Rapid City while they're here at a Civic Center event. And so that's why I support it, and I'll continue to support it. And I'm hoping that I can continue to answer questions from my constituents. And I just want to encourage the rest of us to have that patience and to communicate as best as we can with the media and hope that they get the story out, the facts about this hopeful upgrade and the vote in March. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor, so much for the short meeting. And you're right, Alderman Laurenti, we don't have the shows and the entertainment now, but we used to. We used to, talking to the CVB director, we used to be in the running and used to be able to actually win a lot of the major conventions. And it's not because of our population. It's because a lot of these chain or, you know, recurring conventions, they just like to go travel to different parts of the country just for that experience. They turn it into a working vacation, if you will. But talking about some of the, really what's up with the Barnett, I think it's important to understand that it's a domino effect. So yes, we looked at the Americans with Disabilities issues, and that came up with two different studies, anywhere from thirty-five to thirty-eight million dollars, depending on which one you looked at, and which were very close to one another. But once you pull a building permit to make those improvements, you can't get away from doing the other things. We have snow load issues, our roof is just not in compliance. There are a lot of things with it, not just the technology, but the structure itself. We have water that comes up through the floor, you know, which is a sight to see. Now, we could put that money into this, and remember, these are two-year-old numbers, and we know that construction costs have been going up. So these are two-year-old numbers that we keep batting around. I know that they're more now. If we did something like that, that doesn't include parking, which during all of the public input, that was the number-one thing that people wanted to see with this project was parking. They wanted the parking address, not just for ADA needs, but for general customer needs at the facility. Regardless of how you feel about that, that was something that was identified, and so we looked at that. If we do the bare minimum Band-Aid, if you will, with the ADA, with the life safety and the code issues that have been identified, and it would be unethical to look the other way now and pretend they don't exist, it doesn't give us the parking, it gives us fewer seats. So the point is that it's, that the marketability of that facility has already been proven to be in decline. These improvements won't change that. So chances are, if this vote fails and we go back to, okay, well, we've got to make these improvements that have already been identified, I guarantee somebody's going to say, well, we need to make it more marketable because if we can't have this expansion, we have to do something to capture this business. Or the projections that AECOM has put forward as far as what the revenue is doing, and it's based on historical data, it's not something they pulled out of thin air, that right now, it's about sixty-four million dollars a year. By 2036, be down to around thirty million dollars a year if we did nothing. Now, even making these renovations, but not making it more marketable, is very synonymous with doing nothing. Because we'll have a 1970s facility that is ADA compliant, but is not marketable. It's still not marketable, still doesn't provide the things that the Touring Act are going to need, the seat requirements, all that. So, you know, it would be, it'd be sad to do that. Now, here's the thing that I am very concerned about. The vote fails, and we put the money into the Band-Aid option. How long is that really going to last us before we have to be talking about an expansion? So we have an expansion, and, you know, if we don't do it, we're not going to be able to pay for both. One of the things that the council looked at was, how much could the Vision Fund support? How much could the Vision Fund support? We're not going to be able to do both. So we do this now, we're going to do it later, we can't do it both. And that's the point I want to leave you with. What's the point of order? Yes, sir? I can hear you in my ear, so please.
This wasn't about all of us having the platform to rehash. The darn things up for an election on March 10th. The point of order was whether or not the ADA was a complaint or what it was.
She's almost done.
Well, it's interesting that it took you that much momentum to call it when pretty much everybody's been talking about different things. So I apologize, thank you. Thank you for reeling it back in at the end of the conversation, Mr. Estes.
Darla Drew.
One small historic point, that when this one percent, or one cent sales tax was put on after we built the Civic Center, that was, I know, this isn't going to be about ADA right now.
A point of order has been called.
Okay, done.
Please just state the point of order, and then we have a ruling and all that.
Have your mic on.
Turn your mic on, turn your mic on, Ron.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. If somebody wants to get into debate about the merits of the center, number one, this is a polling center, people are going to be voting on March 10th. I think the bottom line, I think you mentioned that, people are going to be voting on it. We all know what your opinion is, and we all know-
Just state the point of order, Ron.
Yeah, there.
I'm going to uphold the point of order, but you can appeal the decision of the chair if you want.
I will not.
Okay. John Roberts.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Any objections to calling the question? The question, the motion is to acknowledge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now on public hearing items forty-two through forty-five. Public hearing is now open, we do not have any speaker request forms. Public hearing is now closed. We have a motion to approve items forty-two through forty-five. You want to pull forty-five? Okay, forty-five's been pulled, we have a motion, the motion by Wright and the second by Doyle was to approve forty-two through forty-four.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries, item forty-five, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need to remove number four for Eugene Enzer and number fourteen for James and Ruth Riley as they have come in and made payment to the finance office.
Okay, we have a motion by Estes and a second by Laurenti to approve as amended. Item forty-five without items four and fourteen on that list, under item forty-five. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Billis, Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total is that which is before you at seven million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eight cents.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Roberts, any discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned, 8:38 PM.